I will call the regular meeting of Christiansburg Town Council, September 10th, 2019, to order. And as always, I ask that you take a moment of reflection and I hope that you will keep the members of the Holland family and the Christiansburg Fire Department in your thoughts of the loss of Brian last week. Police stand pledge allegiance to the Black House, Councilman Brad Stipes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. I would like at this point to make a strike E and B and time confirmation.
Strike E. Anyone else? Any comments?
You know, we have a revised proper statement for one of the public hearings.
Okay. You'll let us know at time, perhaps. Dan Park, would you be involved in council to strike E?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six. I thank you. So we will strike Section E out of discussion and action by Mayor and Council. Public hearings tonight, we have three. The first is a conditional use permit by NRV Marketplace LLC for a planned commercial development comprehensive signage plan and farmer's market for property located at 2501 to 2785 Market Street Northeast, tax map number 436-5-1. In the B3 General Business District, this property is designated as business commercial in the future land use map of the 2003 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this matter? Name of address?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Steve Sinunas with Ballser and Associates, AD College Street. We're the engineers, surveyors, that are representing NRV Marketplace in this application. What I wanted to do tonight, about two and a half years ago, I got a phone call from somebody I'd never met before and said, "I got this idea. I want to purchase the old Marketplace Mall." And we'd heard that over the years, as probably a lot of us, a lot of us in the engineering and consulting business had heard, came down to the office and met with us and realized we'd actually done some work with this group out of our Richmond office. And really started looking into what they were wanting to do, and it's exciting project as a resident of Christiansburg, as most of us, the thought of seeing-
Andrew, did you hit the kill switch?
I can't.
Thank you.
I thought that was for me.
Not yet. Not yet.
I've got hours to go, Mayor. So it was exciting as we started looking at the possibility of redeveloping this piece of property that's been sitting primarily vacant for several years. As Planning Commission and Council, over the last few months, had gone through and put together an ordinance that allows for planned commercial development, this property right here is kind of the first ones that's come before you to look at it and look at some of the options that we have from a development standpoint on how we could use some of that flexibility that the PCD really creates as a conditional use permit in a B3 piece of property. What I wanted to do tonight, we've got three requests, and I'll start with one that we call the planning condition, I guess the easier one, because there's a little bit of misconception early on as we filed the submittal. So we have three requests before council tonight to talk about. One is the planned commercial district conditional use permit. One is for a use of a farmer's market, and then the third one is a special signage plan. I'm going to touch on the farmer's market just to kind of dispel any rumors that may have been popping out online or out there. When we initially had this conversation with staff, we didn't, the very most important thing we did not want to have happen is for anybody in the community to think this was going to compete with our farmer's market on Hinkock. That wasn't the intent of this. The intent was based on the definition of what a farmer's market is and what it allows. Some of the things that the property owners wanted to do, you know, like a Christmas market, if you were selling candles or housewares that were homemade, that kind of falls into a farmer's market. But the intent is to not have fruits, vegetables, you know, locally grown produce on this site. It's really just a, it's a textual piece of the zoning ordinance and the definition of what a farmer's market is. We're happy to discuss it as we get into discussion either tonight or in a couple weeks, but just wanted to dispel any misconceptions that may have been out there, that this was a true farmer's market in the sense that most of us think about. Well, on that topic, some of those areas, one of the reasons we brought that up is to have some sort of, it's important to try to create a place here, so it's not just a shopping mall. It's not just a, it's just not a big box. It's really creating some new spaces, as you can see, and for the public that's here tonight, this is a master plan that's currently proposed for the property. And I probably should have backed up, and I apologize. As anybody knows, it's driven by there in the last couple of months, we're under construction. So this is a buy right development that we're doing, what we're asking for tonight, or it's again, some of the flexibility portions of it. But right now, what's happening on site, there's a stormwater management pond sitting in between where Arby's is right now and the Taco Bell. So there's reconfiguration of the stormwater management facility. Market Street right now kind of bows in and comes back out. Market Street is being straightened. A lot of transportation improvements that we've looked at on this that we feel is very beneficial to the town and to the development. The biggest is setting up Shoppers Way and the new intersection here is a four-way intersection. Right now, as you know, if you're driving northbound on Franklin, there's no way to turn into the site until you get past Burger King, and there's no crossover right there. So this entails, as again, anybody that's driven by, you'll see the new Arby's that's popping up right here. So as soon as that's done and complete, which is fairly close, Arby's will pick up, move next door, we'll demo the Arby's building and then put in the new infrastructure, water, sanitary, storm sewer, and the new entrance road that'll access into the site. As part of this development also, there will be a fully, it'll be a four-legged intersection right there, so there will be a signal to allow people to come in and out of the development. We've also made other entrance improvements here on Peppers Ferry Road, to orient everybody north Franklin and Peppers Ferry. This is the other access onto Market Street, where you kind of come in and have to make that hard left turn. You can see out on site, all these buildings right here in this corner have been demolished. So the intent of that is, again, we're not trying to box off the, you know, box off the interior of the space, we're trying to open it up, give some visual into the site. Front Peppers Ferry, these are small shops, restaurant pads that can go in. You can see green space, outdoor patio areas, you know, outdoor eating. It's really trying to engage and activate that space more so than what your typical 1980s, you know, strip mall would have been. We also have another access point here in the back. This is Goodwill, right here. So this again is kind of a loading area right now, as you can see, that will be one of our main entrances and will again, take you right into the main field of parking as the western Peppers Ferry entrance will as well. So I apologize, wanted to get back through and to kind of tell you where we were right now. We have submitted several site plans to the town, one for Phase 1, which was the pond and the Market Street relocation and the new entrance. We've submitted a site plan for the Arby's. And some of the smaller pads, you see out here, some of the new out parcels, there's Burger King, there's the old Applebee's, so we've submitted a site plan for this. This is the existing small little strip center where I believe the Jazzercise is right now. Union Bank sits right up here above us. We've submitted a site plan for this as well. And we've submitted a site plan for Phase 2, which includes these improvements basically right here. So that's where we are right now on site. So as we looked at what the planned commercial district would allow us to do, is give us some of the flexibility that when you're redeveloping a property like this, you can look at it from a couple of different perspectives. So what I'd like to do is just go through our application, and I promise I'm not going to read it word for word, but go through a couple of the items specifically we're asking for as part of this. The temporary uses, we talked a little bit about the farmer's market, which is a separate application, separate vote, but we want to be able to have events like, you know, movie nights in some of these green space areas here, or an outdoor theater, if you've got a small band that would want to come out, if you wanted to do a food truck radio. So anything like that that would allow people to come in to use the mall beyond which they normally would to just go in and shop at one of the stores. Building heights and setbacks, and these are all in your package that we submitted, I'm just going down items one through five, I believe. So number two, we had building heights and setbacks. In the general, in the B3 zoning district, we have a maximum height of 35 feet. It's kind of a buy right height of a building. You can increase that up to 70 feet if you increase your setbacks away from your property lines a certain amount. One of the options we have for the property right now, back behind where the old Walmart or Tractor Supply was, I guess was the last use in there, is back in this corner of the parking lot where Tractor Supply had their trailers sitting and some of their farm fencing. There's a possibility for a hotel to come in on this piece right here, to become a part of the product, which is an exciting idea that kind of popped up and nobody was really expecting it first from a development standpoint. So the ability to have a hotel here, we're trying to keep the parking ratios where it's going to work with the tenants, it's going to work with the town ordinances. If a hotel were to come in on this spot, we would likely be doing a podium park building, which means your parking would be at ground level, just like it would be, you'd be parking in this parking lot right here that's out there right now, but we'd be building up above it. So it's not a parking garage, it's not a parking deck, you're parking on the surface and building over it. When we do that, we want to get to a four or five story hotel to get the number of rooms that would be needed. We hit that 70-foot height limit. The issue is, is where we're located on the property, we've got our additional setback, which is basically for a 70-foot building, you'd have to have a 70-foot setback. We've got it on this backside up against the Superbowl. We don't have it here up against the hillside that leads up to what was Stellar 1. So we've got 35 feet roughly in this area right here, maybe a little bit more in certain areas. So that's one of the asks we have before council tonight, is to give us a variance on having to step the hotel back to that full 70-foot height in that one location. We did talk to Planning Commission, that is the only building on the site that we're asking for that height increase and that setback increase. That's the only one. And through our conversations with Planning Commission, Planning Commission was favorable for this request. Again, it's kind of back in the property, there's a big grade change obviously between the base of the elevation of the parking lot there and then the top when you hit Stellar 1. So we're about a 13 or 14-foot, 15-foot grade differential between the Stellar 1 parking lot and ours. So it is kind of sitting back tucked into the property. Number three is our site green space landscaping. So the town has a requirement that in general, keeps saying general version, in B3 zoning, that you have to have a certain amount of green space that's required per the zoning ordinance when you're redeveloping a site. Right now, the site itself does not meet that standard. It's got, we're required to provide 20% green space on the site. Right now, the site sits at about 19%. As we discussed with staff early on, if we were just redeveloping, refacing the property itself, we wouldn't have to meet, go up above what's out there right now. We basically have to match existing and not bring it into any less compliance than it is right now. So what we're looking for on that is, is we, the potential to subdivide off parcels. So if we've got a 28, 29 acre parcel, which is what this is, there's a potential to subdivide off parcels for out parcels, so similar to this right here. What we've asked is that our green space be calculated over our entire property. So when we look at a parcel such as this one right up here on the front of Franklin, in order to get the parking spaces that the tenants need as well as provide the green space that's required if that were its own subdivided lot, it's kind of one or the other. We can't get enough parking for our tenants there and then still provide the onsite green space that would be required in a smaller parcel like that. So what we've asked, and several of these are similar in the request, is that while we may subdivide off parcels on this piece of property as we go forward, it's still being master planned. It's one master plan development. It's still one overall concept from the master plan to the landscaping, to the infrastructure, to the transportation. So that's one of our requests, is that if we subdivide off parcels, the open space and the green space that's required is looked at from an overall parcel standpoint and not an individual subdivided piece. We also have a request that if the hotel does come in, that part of our green space could be counted as a green roof. So the hotel has an interest in doing a green roof. We see those in a lot of urban areas. I believe we've got one in Christiansburg. We proposed one in Blacksburg. We told Planning Commission we hadn't been able to get that done because they couldn't afford it. But the hotel that we've looked at on this is open to doing a green roof, which again, helps with the stormwater management piece of it. It provides a different type of a field to that rooftop terrace that they looked at proposing for the hotel. And it also, it also is something we don't have. It's one of the unique features that when you look at a planned unit development or planned commercial development, some sort of a unique development option. This is something we have available to us. And I do believe the Planning Commission did put a restriction on that as we had our votes. What they, one of the planning commissioners was concerned of is they wouldn't want to see a plan that came in that had nothing but green roofs on it, you didn't have a tree in the parking lot. So again, that's not the intent of what we proposed, and I think they limited it to 1%. Is that right, Walter? Of our allowable site green space?
1%. 1% of the total site area.
Total site area. Okay. So that was number three. Number four is parking lot green space and landscaping. So again, another requirement of the town zoning ordinance is for every parking space that's provided onsite, you can have 40 square feet of green space within the parking area. There are subsurface, searing subsurface drainage, wet soil conditions in this area right here. When we started excavating out for the pond, the water that was just running subsurface under there, under the parking lot, draining into that has caused a lot of additional cost for all that wet dirt being removed, a new dry dirt being brought in to be compacted and get it built the way it needed to be. So as we looked at ideas for landscaping around the property, you can see the ones I was pointing out earlier, these green spaces that are around the perimeter, but the hope was to not go in and introduce any more penetrations into the parking lot that's there. There's no storm sewer. Typically, in a big parking lot like this, if you go to Walmart, you see several drop inlets in their parking lots. When this was designed, everything sheet flows down to basically one drop inlet right here. So even if we were going to introduce any new grading or any new storm sewer, you'd be tearing up the entire parking lot. We've got other utilities in there as well to get to it. So what we've asked for is a reduction in our parking lot requirements for landscaping from 40 square feet per parking space to 20 square feet. So we're currently, and again, everything that we are requesting within the conditional use permit is provided for in this master plan. What you see here is what would work based on what we're requesting tonight. And then finally, the last piece of it is the signage, the special signage plan. So Andrew, would you mind going to the sign location plan? Ah, yes, sir. Right there you have it. So currently in the packet, we have four main signs proposed along the frontage of the property. As we've talked with staff, I was not aware of how many, exactly how many signs we could have gotten on the property. So we've got about 1,400, 1,500 linear feet of road frontage, which allows us, if you did it strictly by code, up to, I think, seven signs across the frontage of the property. So what's being requested are four signs right now. We've got sign number one, and these are all in your packet and the sign examples as well, we can scroll through those tonight. So sign number one is a 35-foot pylon sign. So 35-foot height is currently by code the highest you can go within the district. So a pylon sign would be what you would normally see at a shopping center like this, what you see at the NRV mall. So it's on a pedestal and the sign is sitting up higher, you've got your placards for your tenants in there. So we'd have one pylon sign right here. A monument sign, which would be a lower, I think we're eight or 10 feet at that point, but a smaller brick pedestal sign that you see again, in smaller shop retail areas, we have one at our entrance right here on Peppers Ferry. We'd have another monument sign up here at the top, which is Pad H. So again, Burger King and Applebee's. One of the requests for this sign is we've asked for a reduced setback on that. That's explained in our text, but we've asked for a one-foot setback off of the right-of-way there. The right-of-way is very wide right there at Franklin, and as we looked at site distance from a safety, from a visibility standpoint, we felt that this request was still meeting, you know, site distance requirements, not causing any visibility issues for anybody traveling along northbound on Franklin. So we have asked for a reduced setback on that, where that would be a monument sign. And then the number four sign right here is the last request within our sign application, which is a 70-foot height pylon sign. So again, a similar sign to what you see here, just a taller sign itself. One important thing to look at, we've provided perspectives that were done by the architect and the sign company within the package that we submitted. One of the big, one of the big reasons for our taller sign request right here is as you're driving down Franklin, you can notice that's the lowest point of the site. So all the stormwater management that comes out of our pond, comes down to this low point here at Shoppers Way in our new entrance, goes across and goes into the NRV mall, goes through that property and out. So this is the lowest point of the property right here. So we have a new building, we have Burger King, the new Arby's, and a new tenant building right here. So with the elevation sitting where it is on the road, when you're coming southbound on Franklin, coming back down this way, a 35-foot sign is lost behind the buildings here with the grade. So we're asking for an increase in the allowable sign height, and you can see that in some of the presentations that were in, some of the renderings that we provided, that shows you getting the sign up to that level, we'll get it up above the heights of the new building out here as well. Andrew, I'm going to scroll through those real quick. So this will be the 35-foot sign. You can see the colors and materials in there. So this will be the 35-foot sign, this is sign number one, that would be at the westernmost entrance of, on Peppers Ferry. These are the two monument signs that we discussed, on the easternmost, Peppers Ferry entrance, and the one in front of Pad H between Applebee's and Burger King. And then that would be the 70-foot sign right there. Again, same shape, this part of the sign itself is the same between the 70-foot and the 35-foot in this application material. Obviously, the difference is the height itself of the sign. Does she get any of those rings? Okay. Also, I'll hit the kill switch here, Mayor. The last piece of it, we had in Section 3, so in the planned development, in the planned commercial development regulations, there were 10 kind of bullet points that the Planning Commission and Town Council asked for applicants to kind of look at as they were evaluating and judging whether a property would be applicable to this regulation or this conditional use permit. So we haven't tried to address those, those 10 bullet points in there as well, those are in there, I won't read them for you, but we really tried to look at this, being the first one coming through the town, that we were respectful of what Planning Commission and Council had laid out for what a planned commercial development could be, and hopefully continue the exciting redevelopment of this project. Our client, Walt Raptor, is here. I'm not sure if Jim is here or not, but we're here to answer any other questions council may have after the public hearing. Or I'll answer some right now if anybody has any.
If nobody else has any questions, I have a few. The thing that you talked about, the farmer's market, is that going to be a weekly thing or will it be just for special events sort of and that way?
It would just be special events. Yes, sir.
So like for Christmas, it might be the three weeks before Christmas or something like that?
Correct. Correct. It's just, it's giving us an option. There's no definite plan on it, it's just giving us an option that if there's a tenant there, or if there's a, whatever, a Boy Scout troop that wants to, you know, sell Christmas ornaments or something like that, you know, that it gives us the opportunity to bring other people in to the mall, make it a little bit more pedestrian feeling.
I tell you, I've been on council, I think I've said this before, you know, for several years, and I myself have never been excited as I am today about this project that you guys are doing. And it is really going to do something, I think, for Christianburg. And, you know, it's, I think it's, we're all just holding our breath to see when this thing is finished. Now on top of that, I think this is going to be a classic piece of property here, and I wonder if you, people are going to realize this pretty quickly, what a fine piece of property this is. Do we need that much signage, you know, to, you know, to me, it's sort of like if you have a box of chocolate that has 20 pieces of chocolate in it, okay? And the guy says, "Well, I'm going to put in one more piece of chocolate." Well, that's nice, but the 20 pieces was fine. And that's what I'm sort of thinking right here, with this, we had this mall, it's going to stick out well, do we need to put all the signage, and especially this, the 70-foot piece of signage? That is my question.
That's a question. Walt, would you like to address from a development standpoint?
Mr. Mayor, Town Board, this particular sign is, that we're requesting is big, when we first acknowledged that. The sign is eight feet higher than the mall sign across the street. I think one of the critical things is that we're disadvantaged by the location of this main entrance from the standpoint of where we would put this sign and with the Verizon Building right there at the main entrance, this small gray building. You can't see it if it's not at 70 feet. It just looks over it and you can see it from points out on Franklin Boulevard if that there. Hopefully, many people have seen the Facebook presentation of the entrance on Franklin on this site. It's amazing to me, we put that up first thing in the morning, and 18,000 people looked at this entrance and this sign. And we only had one question about the sign. So I think from a perspective on this street, that that's what's needed. We don't like to put as many signs as your ordinance allows, and I would recommend that the new ordinance should restudy that. Putting up the number of signs that would be allowed would be inappropriate for a property like this. But we hope you'll give that consideration. Can I answer any questions about that?
Well, let me follow up on that. I'm not sure, Andrew, if you can go back to putting that 70-foot sign up there. I was, the lighting, let's say at night?
Go down to the next slide.
Yeah, at night, I mean, sometimes I've always tried, and I haven't done a very good job. I don't want to make Christiansburg, Las Vegas. And I like to think about things like Williamsburg and Lexington. How much, is this going to light up big time at night or?
The sign panels would be lit, which is where you see that one box in the middle that bounces, the sign is not lit. I agree with you that I don't want it to look like Las Vegas, but the tenants want to make sure they have sign attended on this street coming south that way. And it's the tenants who are making the decision as to the height of the sign.
So they're pretty well stuck at 70 feet?
I'm sorry, sir.
They feel that 70 feet is the correct?
Well, I think we have a perspective that shows the sign looking over- Well, I think we have a perspective that shows the sign looking over, coming southbound on Franklin, looking as where the, it is. I mean, if you're coming that way because of the height of the Verizon Building, that's the only way you're going to see it.
I have one more, then I'll get out of here. The roof of the hotel, the green space, is that going to be sort of like a garden area where people can have cocktails up there, or is this just, is it going to put out grass?
Well, what we plan is that's going to be a gathering area. You're going to be able to go through that lobby entrance and go up to the second floor. We've done this treatment before, and it gets strongly used. We did it inside the district on the large office building, and also they are effective treatment for rainwater, which it goes down and is put into the soil.
So you're thinking about making that sort of a garden area, like the other place?
Absolutely. You know, if you go to many hotels that got public gathering places outside, more than just around the soaring pool, and I think this will be used effectively.
I appreciate you putting up with me.
That's allowed to. I've been treated much worse before. Can I answer any other questions for anybody?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you look at the sign at the mall across the street, and then the one that you proposed putting up, is, and I don't know the correct engineering words, but is the pitch the same?
No, not at all. And we're not talking about the sign that's directly across the street. We're talking about the sign that's up on the form. But if you go southbound on Franklin right now and driving in that lane, you can't see the mall sign across the street that's directly across from our sign. It's not possible to read it. And signage drives tenants, drives retail sales. And that's why it's really important to our tenants.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the second public hearing, which is an ordinance to rezonate 125.652 acres, commonly known as the Meadows Golf Course and Shepherd Property, parcel number 016377, 016381, 016378, 230266, 230267, and 230268. From A Agricultural to R2, two-family residential with proffers. The property is located on the western boundary of the town of Christiansburg. Ready to have a proper?
Yes, I have a revised proffer statement on the pass, Council members.
Is anyone here to address this?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the Council, this is Tom Rutherford, the project manager with Shaw Development. We're here tonight basically to request just the rezoning from A Agricultural to R2 Residential. The property was formerly located within the incorporated Montgomery County. It was a corporate boundary line adjustment between the town and the county that brought it into the corporate limits of the town. In doing such, the property was brought in at the lowest base district the town has, and that's A Agricultural. The community, the parcel was own community business when it was located in Montgomery County. That zoning classification opened it up for apartments, I think a hotel, I think there's a list of the uses that are in your packet. But what we've actually done, we've proffered, and that's the revised proffer that we've passed out tonight, that was through the work of the Planning Commission, we come up with it. We wanted to add that the conceptual plan that you have in your package, this development will be built in substantial or general conformance with that plan, and also a maximum of 51 lots. So there'll be no more than 51 residential lots, there'll be no duplexes, there'll be no apartment complexes, it'll be straight, single-family detached lots. Basically, that's given you one dwelling unit for roughly over two, two and a half acres, so pretty good size. What we did, we had four or five lots along the front around Meadow Drive. We tried to make those lots similar in size to the lots, the existing residents that are across the street. We have larger, we'll call them estate lots, that wrap around the perimeter around North and Southern Railroad, Christian Mill Road, adjacent to some existing residents off of Christian Mill Road. And then we're looking at doing a clustering development within the center of the project. And what those will be is patio-style homes, I believe there's 30 of them in the concept plan. Single-story living, but that doesn't mean that it wouldn't be a story and a half, or a two-story, or a story on the basement. But all the main living components would be on the main story. Homeowners Association will take care of the amenities. We've used all the floodplain and the existing cart paths, or some of the existing cart paths, to, we're going to make walking trails for the neighborhood. We have a road proposed, the public road will be extended, there'll be sidewalks on both sides, we're looking at a five-foot median from the back of the curve to the sidewalk. So that area will be landscaped, and a big place for post lights at the end of the sidewalks coming from the homes, mailboxes, trash delivery, recycling, and those amenities. Pretty standard, the R2, the compact or clustering is by right use in that ordinance. There were some questions about the smaller size homes up there with the larger, I believe that zoning was R1A, across the railroad track, which is a larger lot size. So what we've done is we've transitioned our development to put our higher density right in the center of the project, and it's also the best use of that property as well. Sorry, mine isn't as exciting as Steve's, so if I don't have any further questions.
You don't have a sign to put up there, Thomas.
Tommy, a question for you. You proffered 51 homes, that is including the cluster homes?
Yes, that's every one of them. That was not a proffer, that was, of course, the Planning Commission doesn't make a recommendation, but.
But it's 51 is the maximum?
51 is the maximum, that is clear.
And I think it's fair, I think most of us have seen it, if not, hopefully you've seen, we have had at least one comment about this subdivision, and one of the main questions, once you get outside of that subdivision, is, you know, you're throwing a lot of traffic on Silver Lake Road, which is, at best, a terrible road. Do you have any plans with the county to widen that road or do anything?
Yes, sir, we don't. And when you look at the trip generation manual, I went through this Planning Commission, you have different number of trips. Brad, you jump in anytime I'm missing something.
10 per house.
10 per house for a single family. For a townhouse, it's less, for an apartment, it's less. So for a single-family home, that's the highest traffic generator that you have, which is about 10 trips per day. We just recently, Shaw Development did a rezoning in Montgomery County off Prices Fork Road, and we actually had to do a traffic impact analysis, because this was a 341-lot development. So they did actual counts. There's an existing road out there that there's over 300 residents with one way in, one way out. And based on that, it's 3,000 trips per day. They did an actual traffic count, and it's like 1,700. So I think those numbers, Brad, are very, very conservative. But even with the 10 trips per day per household, there should be a machine in your packet where Christiansburg Town staff did an analysis based on that same trip generation manual. And it really doesn't alter the numbers on the roads coming in or going out. So we're not a big traffic increase.
In good weather.
I understand.
I lived out there, I know.
I tell you, I have to agree with the mayor. I mean, it's a single going in and out, is that correct?
Yes, sir, same width as Cambria Street.
And it's fairly long. I mean, I would think the road isn't that good a condition myself, 51 single-family homes. And I mean, if that thing gets washed out sometime, I don't, you know.
A three-R2 zoning, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet per lot. So based on the by-right use of an R2 zoning district, by the time you get your F construction and stuff in, you're looking at, you know, four homes per acre.
And you're looking at home sites that are one to two to three?
What would that be, we'll have a home per acre, or something like that? I mean, we even proffered drastic.
The Silver Lake Road is, that is still in the county, is that correct?
I guess portions of it. It starts off, it's in the town.
Yeah, but once you pass the corporate limits, just.
After just a few hundred feet, you got.
Then it comes to the county.
Correct.
So it's theirs domain, tiny, VDOTs domain, tiny.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Rutherford. In your application and the sketch, you have a statement in here, a proffer statement, that it's going to be two-family dwellings.
That it will not be.
Oh, not be?
Yeah, look at the.
So it'll be excluded, okay, two-family dwell. Okay, so, because he also said it was, heard you say, single-family detached, so they're all, okay.
That's correct. Those permitted uses are by right in the R2 zoning district today. We exclude.
And you're saying you're not going to do?
That's correct.
Okay, I got it, excluded, I missed the word excluded. Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I have.
So we're saying these houses are going to go 300,000 to 400,000?
The first one that we applied for building, committed, not counting the land, was a little bit over 500,000.
So I guess we're saying, if you have the money to pay for a $500,000 house, that you know that you're going to go one way in and out, you should already know that.
Well, the road that we are building, the lots that are out there are now, the existing homes, granted, there's only maybe six or seven of them, they're one way in and one way out too. Only until you get to Silver Lake Road, and then you have the option to go left to Rafford Road, right to Christian Mill Road, or straight ahead to Rafford Road again. So as a comparison, Councilman Hubbard, Cambria Crossing subdivision, that was, I think, ended up being, that was a MU1 mixed-use residential zoning district, that one ended up having 121 residential lots with one way in, one way out. And I'm sure most of y'all on the board or on council will remember, up until a number of years ago, when you went down Cambria Street, when you went to Henley Drive, and Windmill Hill Space 1, and Windmill Hill Space 9, for years and years and years, that was one way in and one way out.
Yeah, you're right.
So this is the, in traffic engineering world, this is a very minute addition to the road network itself.
Council, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for attending.
Anyone else to address this issue? If you, name and address.
Hi, Laura Pontier, and I live at 1301 Christian Mill. I want to say thank you for already bringing up one of the concerns that I had, I was not able to go to the county planning meeting. But basically, knowing that there are severe, I would say severe, or a heightened level of traffic awareness on that road, I live at the top of the hill, can literally see accidents on both sides of the road whenever there's really bad weather. So it's just something to consider, as much as they're going to go down Silver Lake, they'll come down Christian Mill as well and go that direction. So just that part, which you guys are already taking into consideration, so I appreciate that. My other one is about flooding and stormwater. I do get to see that property get a lot of runoff. You guys are all aware of the Crab Creek runoff issues in the town, and that all drains right down in that area. So just to be mindful, or to request that that be included in whatever planning is going on, to make sure that that water is going to be distributed correctly, the stormwater treatment's going to be in place, that it's not going to continue to add flooding to that road, and then also that groundwater is not affected, as most of us have wells. So there's potential that that could cause some issues, so just to bring that to your attention as well. Thank you.
Okay. I ask a question with relation to that, to the town.
Yes.
Well, actually, not for you, ma'am. I appreciate your comments, it's for staff regarding that issue. So this property is now in the town, and it will be reviewed under the current Part 2D regulations for runoff reduction, it'll actually, is that correct? So it will fall under the new regulations, which hopefully address a lot of your concerns. If, I mean, if it's successful, but I want that clarification, that it does fall under the new regs.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else to address this issue? Hearing none, I will close the public hearings. Under consent agenda, we have a council meeting minutes January 27. We scheduled. Oh, the ordinance to rezonate, such a small portion, I forgot. Res zoning point 36 acre portion of property, tax map numbers 53018, 1-7, from A Agricultural to R3 multi-family residential. The property is located 2175 to 2235 Giles Drive, southeast in the Reagan Point subdivision. Is there anyone here to address this? Mr. Clark?
Mayor and Council, I, excuse me, I spoke on this side, I'm at the public hearing, so I'll, for Planning Commission, so I'll do it for town council. This was about a third of an acre that was also brought into the town with the recent boundary adjustment. This is part of the Reagan's Point subdivision, which was approved for a rezoning and a conditional use permit for a planned housing development back in 2017. This property is under development, really what this is, is just to bring the first seven lots, essentially just the backyard of the first seven lots, and leave the same zoning district as the rest of the neighborhood. There won't be a change to the development, to the development conditions or to the permitted uses. Really just makes the zoning uniform on those first seven lots and removes the split zoning
Any questions, Mr. Clark? Thank you. I will now close the public hearings. Under consent agenda, we have a council minutes of August 27. We need to schedule the public hearing on October 22, 2019, for permission use request by Shaw Development for planned housing developments, Christian Mill Road, adjacent to Christian Mill Road, around Meadow Drive, Potter Lane, and North and Southern Railroad right-of-way. Parcels numbers the same as we listed in the other, and formerly known as Meadows Golf Course and Shepherd Property and two-family residential district. We set that public hearing for the 22nd of October. Is Tom good? And that's it.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items. It's presented.
A second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? I will say, what, Randy, is that the fifth public hearing at night?
Maybe.
I'll thank you dearly while I'm in Mexico. Steve, okay. If there's no comment, Madam Clark, which call?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Schellwalter.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stiles.
Aye.
That's six, and thank you very much. We have no introductions and presentations. Citizens comments, this is where the citizens can come forward and give the impression or thoughts of things going on within the town, as we normally follow, name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here to address, Councilman?
Ms. Barbara, councilmembers, I'm Sue Peror, Director of the Montgomery Museum. I live at 145 Melody Drive in Christiansburg. As you all, most of you know, we've just had a very successful event fundraiser. It's our biggest event of the year at the museum. And with your help, we moved it, we were able to move it to downtown, we were both on the grounds of museum and downtown. And I just am here to thank you for all the help and support you gave, the police were out. out there, and they were so cheerful, all day, watching traffic to make sure all our folks were safe. Public Works did a wonderful job of moving everything around, brought the beautiful stage out, and we had, we had a really good day, we had a great response from the community, and the partnership with town is wonderful for us, and we just want to thank you. I so appreciate those of you who came, I think I saw most of you, a graduate anyway, but we appreciate that, and, and we, we want to be doing that again, of course, and just want to thank you for your support.
Thank you, Sue, it was a great event.
Thank you.
It's Peror, financially, how did you end up?
I'm sorry?
Financially? Was it immediate or extreme?
Actually, we didn't, we haven't got it quite together, it's a big $5,000, not as much as we have made in the past, because we made some significant changes, which will do better next year. We, we know what we, we didn't, we didn't feel like we lost, but we, we made some changes to make that happen. But we had many more vendors, and many more participants, and many more visitors, which was, which was a positive move.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as a member of council, I'd like to thank you for coming in and saying thank you. We don't have people coming in to say thank you very often, they always hear requesting, and they want money, things like that, but somebody come in and say thank you for your support, your thing, that, that means a lot to all of us here on council.
Thank you, we'll be back.
Anyone else to address, Council?
Justin. Justin Sanders, 520A Village Lane, President of Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated. You're going to hear from me again in a minute, I just had two quick updates for council that we're very excited about since we last spoke. We have hired a part-time employee for DCI for the first time ever, so we're very excited about bringing somebody else onto our team. This person is going to be responsible for assisting us with our logistics and planning for our events, but also being our liaison to our downtown property and business owners. So we're very excited that she's on board. She is one week on the job, and we have food truck radio in three days, so she's going to hit the ground running. Sharon Robertson is her name, and I hope you guys get a chance to meet her on Friday, and I hope to bring her to council to do a formal introduction very soon. The other item I wanted to bring up is another exciting development for DCI and for the town. As you all know, we have been, been the recipient this year of a rally grant from Southwest Virginia, University of Virginia Wise, and the Friends of Southwest Virginia. Only three communities were designated as rally communities this year, and this is going to be a really wonderful opportunity for us to work together, the town and the nonprofit, to do some visioning work about a project that we would like to see in our downtown, and this grant came with a $3,000 gift to actually make that project a reality. So our first planning meeting is going to be next week, I hope all of you will be able to attend on Wednesday at Great Road on Main. We really look forward to hearing what the community wants to see in downtown, and we really look forward to continuing our partnership with the town in this new way. So, thank you all.
What time is the meeting, bud?
Six o'clock.
Thanks.
Anyone else to address, Council? Hearing nine, I close the citizens' comment under committed reports, central business, products, no. Street?
Nothing from street, I would like to, yeah, no, not the Huckleberry, even though I like this topic. The airport, or the Montgomery, or Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Airport, I'm requesting that Mr. St. King give a report here in, probably in the late, late, well, maybe November or January. Okay, I'll stop sometime over this period, maybe Jan, but in the next few months, because there's some big exciting things, and we've got some nice drone photography, and give an update on, just some exciting things that are happening, have been there, and it'll be a short presentation, but if it's okay, it's, it's really amazing, the jet, to increase in jet, you know, jets and so forth. Anyway, if the council's blessing, I'd like to, I've already mentioned that to him, I'd like him to come in and give a brief presentation, five minutes, and then answer any questions he has, but he'll, he's more articulate than I am, but, and there's some neat tools to get, you know, so that you know one-fourth owners of it.
So you'll give the contact, Randy, some of that?
Yes. I'll coordinate with Randy, but according to yours, what's the best timeframe, November or January, probably, is that the timeframe?
When did, I, I don't go up that way anymore, when did they open the extension?
It's not open, it's not. No, it's, it's, it should be, all of the work should be completed by next fall. They're wide open out there now, but the results of that are already being seen, they, there are two hangars there, the fuel sales are going up, which is a big revenue generator for them. He'll provide all the numbers for that, but I think it would be good for him to come and do that, just a brief presentation, not a 20-minute presentation, but, so that's my report on that, we had a meeting earlier today. Thank you, Mayor.
Same, Mr. Keith? Harry?
Not really, that's.
Very good. Discussions and actions by Mayor and Council, conditional use permit request by Jeff and Liz Dixon for a single-family residential dwelling at 100 South Franklin Street, tax map number 527-8-250, in the BT Central Business District, this property that was designated as downtown mixed-use on the future land use map, the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan, a public hearing was held on August 27th, and I will mention that we did receive, I think, one email from a lady supporting granting the request.
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit request by Jeff and Liz Dixon for a single-family residential dwelling at 100 South Franklin Street.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any discussion, comments, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Schellalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That's six eight. Boundary line adjustment agreement moving at approximately 68.866 acres from the unincorporated area of the county of Montgomery into the incorporated town of Christiansburg. The proposed boundary adjustment area is commonly known as Falling Branch Corporate Park, Phase Two, parcel two, tax map number 94-8-8, formerly the Cox property, and is located on the southern boundary of the town of Christiansburg, west of the intersection of Technology Drive Southeast and Parkway Drive Southeast. Public hearing was held August 27th.
I'll make a motion to change the boundary line adjustment between the 68.866 acres.
Move to a. Do we have a second?
I second it.
A motion and a second, discussion? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Schellalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That is six eight, thank you. Next is street closure for the 2019 Chow Downtown Food Truck Radio on December 13th, 2019, organized by Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated.
Promised you were going to see me again. So I want to first start by saying I'm very sorry that it's such a delayed visit to council this year to request the street closure. We had a couple of things that happened, a confluence of events this year. As you all might know, on May 1st, a new fire code went into effect for mobile food vendors. We had a lot of trouble with our vendors getting them into compliance, as G-Pants and Fire Marshal can test too. So we got a very late start in recruiting vendors this year, because we wanted to ensure that they were meeting all town regulations prior to accepting applications. So that delayed getting vendors in, and then we were a bit concerned, three months out, that we had a lower number of vendors than we were anticipating. So that did cause us to get our application a bit later, caused a later meeting with Special Events Committee, and obviously a later request than we would have liked for the street closure for council, so I do apologize for the late nature. What we have done this year, though, is taken the feedback that we've received from previous years from our downtown property and business owners. We want to be good neighbors in requesting a street closure, so we've made some changes to our usual footprint. We are asking for a closure this year between Franklin and Dunkley Streets. Dunkley would remain open during the event, we've shifted things a little bit more toward Franklin to ensure that that can happen. What that also does is it leaves open the, the first front entrance of the Dollar General Market, that's been a concern of that property owner and that business owner in previous years, so we wanted to make that concession. Again, we, again, trying to be good neighbors, we've already reached out to all of our downtown businesses and property owners, pending council's decision notifying them of the street closure. We've worked with Antiques on Main to remove the tent that was in their parking lot last year, that way that they can still receive customers up till 5:00 when they close, they'll be able to access through the rear of the property, through the driveway, and we've been able to do that because we've worked with Great Road on Main to do indoor seating for folks that are looking to sit down and eat. So air conditioning and cover in case we haven't forbid get rain. The other change that we've made in our footprint to accommodate our downtown business owners and neighbors is we've moved the stage, we've got this wonderful mobile stage now from the town, so we're moving that up to the Franklin intersection, so that'll clear out the home healthcare parking lot, so that we can only have tables and chairs, and then our beer truck will be tucked into parking spaces. That way we will ensure that they'll have access for their 24-hour caravan, and we won't be blocking their employees from being able to access the business up until 5:00. So those are the concessions we've made, again, we're asking for the closure of West Main Street from Franklin to Dunkley, and the closure of Hickok Street, the non-pedestrian portion. You've got the map in front of you, again, we'll do all that we can to ensure that we're meeting all town codes, we've had a great meeting with the Special Events Committee, and I believe we've met all their requirements, and I can answer any questions you want.
How many vendors do you have signed up?
Sixteen, we actually, we're, we're able to get above 15, we had 20 last year, so you can see how the, the changes have impacted.
I said you have a paid person.
I'm sorry?
You go ahead, you go ahead.
I was just going to compliment you, I thought you've really put a lot of work into this for not having paid staff members. So thank you to all your volunteers for doing this hard work, and it's going to be a great event.
Thank you.
I'm just going to ask, would you understand what I was saying? I said you have a paid employee now, or you're going to have additional food radios, or?
Oh, Harry. We, we really are happy to bring Sharon on board to be able to do more programming during the year, really strengthen our existing events, and I think we've been working a lot with Casey on the new town programming and being able to be good partners there.
Yeah, you have done that, that's.
But as I, as I mentioned, we've got a lot of programs that aren't event-centered that we're really looking to focus on with just a part-time person, and hopefully freeing up some of the time of our board members to be able to focus on those projects we all care about.
I understand, willing, thanks. Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the street closure as requested for DCI's Chow Down on Saturday.
I second it.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Schellalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Very good, motion passed.
See you Friday.
Yes, you will. Thank you for the warning. Resolution recognizing September the 8th through the 14th, 2019, as Suicide Prevention Week, there is a copy of this in your packet. It is.
I'll make a motion if you need one.
Okay.
To approve the resolution recognizing September 8th through the 14th, the Suicide Prevention Week.
A second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Schellalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That's six eight. Next is considerations solicitation for legal consulting, consultation services, and I believe that proposal is in your packet.
Correct.
Any comments, questions, changes? I think the date back is October the 15th.
Correct, and this recommendation to the finance committee.
I'll get it out there as a motion that we solicit for receiving RFPs for legal consultation.
Do you need a motion for that? I just made it.
Just made a second. A motion and a second, discussions?
I'll put it on the table, and since it is on the table, this, this has not just been discussed, it's the finance committee, it's been discussed for years by council, and I believe we've all had some discussion either on our retreats, or sometime during it. For our professional services is to RFP those every five years. We started a few years ago with our, our town accountants, RFP that out. So it's not only a good fiscal measure, but it's also something we should do as an entity every five years, just to see what's out there. Has nothing to do with what our current attorney, the service that they provide to us, it's a very good service, I would anticipate they'll be one of the front runners when we bid it out, but there was some discussion whether we need to form a committee for that.
Yes, you have that option, you can do interviews as a whole council, that's really at council's discretion.
I believe we should, we should form a committee for that service, since that is a service direct, that is, that falls directly under us. The accountants, not so much.
I definitely, well, I definitely think council should have some say-so, I mean, they.
Well, we will, who we decide, but we're talking about through the RFP process.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I didn't mean that.
I think the finance committee would be a good one. Just a recommendation, to get it started, to make that.
That's a good idea.
So we use, and Lewis, doing an add-on committee, we'll just have to go through the finance committee, is everybody good with that?
Sure.
I'd like to comment on that, I'm in the same business as Mr. Popovich, I sell time, and this, you know, I mean, really, that's what it amounts to, it's a professional service, and I understand and respect that, and I also know it costs time and money to, to go after these, but these on-call relationships, and that's really what this is, even in my, in my business as well, these on-call relationships are beautiful, they're good for us and they're good for, for the firm, but it's good, you can't get too comfortable with that, and every five years, five years is usually the upper limit for on-call contracts, and I'm not the one to put this on the agenda, but I do think it's a good idea, and I do want to also say to our present attorneys, we get, we have good service, but every, every five years is probably a good time to just, to check in, and for council's benefit, that is sort of a, a standard for these on-call relationships, whether it's for the state or locality, some of my relations, our relationships for the company I work for, five years is usually the upper limit for those. And Mr. Popovich is nodding his head, and I've been on council 13 years now, and I don't think we've ever done this, sadly.
2005, I've only heard.
That was two years before I took my seat, so.
It, it, it makes complete sense, if that's, there's, there's no.
So hopefully you don't take offense to that.
No.
I just want to comment that this, this is not unusual at all, we just haven't been doing that, we haven't been practicing that.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I do want to ask a question, because this is for our professional services, and we're already doing it for the accounting, but is that something council needs to pass a resolution on, because there's nothing written by council that every five years?
It's true, that, that's council's discretion, you technically don't have to advertise and go through the RFP or RFQ process if you don't want to, that, that's really at your discretion, you can simply, simply hire someone.
I guess I'm more looking at 10 years from now, is, is it going to take a, a committee or a council member making sure that we are RFPing it every five years?
If you want it as kind of a standard practice, that every five years we'll, we'll rebid it, we can certainly handle that way internally, staff can basically.
Right, but do you, do you need some direction from council, like a resolution or something of that nature?
Either that, just a consensus of council, I think it's, it's good enough in my purposes, it gives me direction.
Okay.
Say, if it's every five years, is, is what I'm hearing.
So, yeah. Let's.
Like with.
So are we doing this with the accountants and the banks on a staggered term?
The bank is about, you handle that every year?
Banks, it depends, I mean, we go out and do new CD renewals, and we go out to all the banks, and we look for bids, changing the checking accounts and stuff is a much more arduous process. So as long as we're getting good service from the bank, we, we haven't really rebid the checking accounts per se, but all our CDs, Money Markets, all that kind of stuff we've rebid, unless.
With the day-to-day operation of the bank accounts, we did bid that two, three years ago and changed, I believe?
Yes.
So it's a good thing, because the good thing is, I don't really want to get on schedule, so we're bidding everything out at the same time.
No, it should be stacked.
So I think what we have is a, is a nice schedule.
Yeah, and the, and the auditors will be rebid every five years. That's on a five percent.
So this, the instruction basically is to follow the same policy that we use for bidding the attorneys?
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'd like to make one more recommendation on this. Mr. Wingfield, and looking at the RFP itself, I don't want this to be overly burdensome, and you do have some language in here about it being streamlined and straightforward. I'd go ahead and put a page limit on it, like ten pages front and back, something like that. If you can't get your message across in ten minutes, or ten pages front and back, I, that's just my suggestion, because it does take, you know, time and effort or money to do that, it costs money to produce this, but I think we should get a good idea for what's out there for ten pages front and back.
I may need to make an edit also in regards to interviews, because I think that statement interviews would be done by council and the town manager. I might specify that it may be a combination of a committee and council and the manager.
Interview committee and town, it's not that. But I would, if that's accepted, I'm just throwing that out there for council. I don't have to be at forty or thirty, forty-page document. I don't think we need that, but that's my suggestion, make it a little easier.
That's a good idea.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor? I do, I think we have, we have a motion on the second.
Yep.
It's been amended back and forth, but the gist is that we're going to rebid, we're going to rebid every five years through the, come through the Finance Committee and the Town Manager, to tell, through the Finance Committee, recommendation with, meeting with the Town Manager, interviewing with, all the above? Is that, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll make a recommendation to council and then, of course, council.
Sure.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Scholter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That's six eight. Thank you very much.
Great idea, Adam.
Staff reports, Town Manager.
Public, Park Public Input Meeting went well last night, was well attended and well received also. Our next step on that is October sixth, we'll be meeting with the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. But you know, I have been speaking with Acquia at Advisory Council, and I spoke to their lead attorney. I did give an opinion that essentially, and it's a little bit different, I guess, than some of what my understanding was, but they say that as long as it, we can clearly distinguish that it is not a, I guess, kind of a, a parsed-out contract, that we can do up to the five hundred dollars, and I will plan on proceeding that way in, in order to do business with potentially a council member. Like I say, that basically the code section, if it's more than five hundred dollars, we will have to bring it back to council as a resolution, and that would have to be done by sealed bid. I still do plan on pursuing some sealed bids, potentially for items such as employee guest shirts, but if it's under five hundred dollars, we can proceed for small, small purchases only, and it has to be something I think is clearly something that isn't, I guess, contract splitting, basically. And I'll just, I'm gonna handle that on a case-by-cases basis myself, with me being the decider of whether it's appropriate to put it out to bid. If it is, I'm going to always seek three, three votes before we seek business with any council member. Just looking at, that's how I proceed with it, unless I hear any objection otherwise.
So clarify for me, please, Randy, that five hundred dollars, is it per event, per...
Well, it, it is per purchase, although you, you definitely want to run into the situation of what is considered contract stacking, and that gets a little bit tricky if you're ordering similar items on a regular basis. If it's a clearly distinguishable project, I'll give you an example, ordering banners for a street closure would be one example of clearly defined project. So let's say another banners for, say, supporting local business. Those would be, I guess, clearly identifiable, separate, separate projects. If it were, say, a street closure banners in, in, let's say, a large quantity, and let's say you're ordering six or seven of those, that may total to seven hundred dollars. You can't do that as two bids, though, to split. Basically, bid splitting like that, contract stacking is considered illegal. So it's like I say, as long as we are comfortable that it is a clearly defined, separate project, then we're basically okay to proceed. Like I say, that's, that's how I plan on proceeding in the future.
Just keep in mind, none of us up here look good in orange jumpsuits.
But again, again, I do plan on handling it, and this is kind of an extra step in our process because it's, you know, less than our threshold, but every time I do it, I would plan on using lowest of three.
Is it without resolution?
Correct. If it's over five hundred, it has to be by resolution and by sealed bid period.
Okay. Next.
Okay. Planning grant survey results, I have, I guess, preliminary results at your seats. Just want to take a look at those. I'll let you know, we had nine hundred and seventy-two responses to that, and we're hopeful that we'll have the final results within a couple of weeks to share with you, but just try to get something in front of us. I guess I'll give you, I guess, clear take, a couple of clear takeaways from that. I think obviously food is a major concern or desire for downtown area, and I think to kind of go along with it, entertainment, craft beer, that type of thing to go with food, so a lot of music and food and drink, basically, seem to be major desires for, for our downtown areas.
Craft beer, they're still set for opening in January?
Yes, they're still remodeling, and as far as I know, they're still, still for that timeline. Then kind of another takeaway from the whole thing is too, I think, the interest in it, like I say, nine hundred and seventy-two responses are just kind of a, I think you can kind of see the interest from the survey itself. I think our downtown is kind of ripe for redevelopment.
These are really good questions, Steve.
You're finding that out.
Thanks, Randy.
Anything else?
Sure. Keep you an update on downtown projects. The sewer project, DLD, should be off of College and Hickok Street by the end of the week, and they should be finishing paving in those areas. So they should be out for those areas hopefully by the start of the Food Truck Radio on Friday. UC Pace is doing Stormwater Project, and we believe they will have one-way traffic open by the end of the week, basically northbound traffic, although we think their paving is gonna run into next week, so hopefully they should finish up next week and be off in North Franklin. And of course, I'll point out, as you know, the Food Truck Radio is this Friday from five to ten downtown, and on Saturday, Christiansburg Talent Show is from five to eight on Hickok Street.
I understand they have ten contestants for this thing, so Casey was really excited about, and they're not all bands, is that correct?
No, wide variety.
We have Unicyclists.
Unicyclists while juggling.
And a Bomb Maker, right?
Yep, should be interesting.
Unicyclists and bombs, that's great.
Right.
Whatever.
And what's the rest of the ten? Would you name them all for us?
Oh, boy. Well, there's a variety of singers, a couple pianists, a couple bands, four or five piece set bands, of course, the Unicyclists, who will be juggling and hula hooping all at the same time. And somehow, that, that variety there gets us to ten, so we have a lot of great interest. I think this is an event I can very, very grow very well in the years to come.
Thanks, Chris.
You guys?
So.
More?
Nothing for me.
Any other staff here to report? Council reports, Mr. Collins.
I just, I wanted to discuss that. It's been good here.
You did, okay. Mr. Bishop?
Don't have any time.
Mr. Scholter?
Nothing.
Mr. Stipes?
Brief comment to bring attention to one of our staff members. Michael Huesman, we, it's almost fitting for one of Mr. Hubbard's letters to the paper, bet you didn't know that we have a town horticulturalist, and Michael Huesman and his staff are hitting it out of the park. I mean, everywhere you look, I see his handiwork, and he doesn't know I'm saying this tonight, but I hope he, I hope this is passed along to him and his staff. The downtown, the Sioux River was here, downtown looks fantastic, the Huckleberry Trail, every place you look, his handiwork is there, and a lot of people don't even know that we have that, but they see his handiwork, and it really adds a lot to our town, and I just want to bring that up to, for people watching. If you didn't know that, we do have an outstanding horticulturalist and staff that keep our community just looking tidy and proud, and that's it, thank you.
Mr. Hubbard? I would like to echo what you just said, I mean, everybody has seen it, it's superb. And I think the amazing thing is too, it's dry as it's been, these plants all look in good shape, and they're all well watered and everything like that, and that is a good letter to the editor, you know? But that, that's super. I'm glad you brought that up, and I hope that it gets to him, so. The only comment I would have to say is here, I see the October eighth here, says regular meeting down at the bottom, and I believe that we've canceled that meeting, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, down at the bottom, says next meeting the twenty-fourth and then October twenty-second. Any other staff? Ms. Sachs?
No additions, thank you.
Very good. I have a couple of things. We received notification this morning, or yesterday, yes, today, that the Christiansburg Park and Parks and Recreation awarded the best new program in the state for our Christiansburg Team Fire Academy that is done in cooperation, Parks and Rec, and Volunteer Fire Department. We received this award for population under twenty-five thousand. I know Mr. Stipes's daughter particip, or Mr. Ms. Stipes's daughter participated in this thing and had a good time out of it. They mentioned a couple of firefighters that took, took two days off of their regular jobs to, to put them through this thing, and it's, it's, it was, it was a well-deserved honor, and this is, I believe, the second year, maybe third year we've done it, but this one was, was superb. I'll mention that. I sent out an email last week to several of, to, to council asking for recommendations on the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet on October the fifth. Didn't, I received one response, I will not be in town that night, so, and I got no comment one way or another, so I am going to recommend that we do a community sponsorship, which is six hundred dollars. It gives us ten tickets, they're not reserved, but we do, but we do have seating, as opposed to a table, which we've done in the past, that was eight hundred dollars. I have checked with VALE, we do have funds within the council administrative budget and donations to do this, correct? Say yes, sir. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, can't hear the rock shaker.
So unless, unless I hear that we want to go to a full table sponsorship, we'll do the community sponsorship?
Let me ask a question, then. I'm in favor of this, but if we do a sponsorship and we're purchasing tickets that are going to be used, and there's an offsetting cost for the meals or whatever that would be, I put it this way, if our decision is to provide a community donation to do that, but the meals aren't used, then there's less benefit to the organization we're providing support to. Does that make sense? Because they're gonna have to do a head count, and they're gonna charge for...
Now, this eight hundred, this six hundred dollars gives us ten tickets, complimentary tickets, and it's up to us to, to use, to attend, to, to other staff members, anything along that line.
We've done it, we've done it in the past, and I support it.
Yeah, Mr. Wingfield, I think, I think you're planning on going, is that correct?
If council is, yeah, I'm certainly planning on attending.
I know that that's the, the night of the mayor's conference in, right? Anyone else planning on going? Mr. Bishop?
I haven't decided.
Okay.
I'm trying to rearrange my schedule so I can go.
It is the night before the start of the regular email conference.
Email starts on Sunday, right? Okay. All right, very good, so I will notify Travis, very attention. Dark Henry, got on with, got talent show. Okay, any other business to come before council?
I just had something I'd like to, I saw you grabbing.
I was grabbing, Ford, brother.
Mentioned, Randy, and I will, we'll say again, I'm glad Brad brought it up, downtown is, you know, the, the plants are beautiful, but if anybody's up and about early in the morning on Saturdays, I'm usually racing, I'm a slug jogger, so there's usually a turtle in front of me, but I want to just mention to Randy and staff that, you know, our downtown is more than just West Main Street, and I understand that, I guess my question is, is there any policy or unwritten policy that you have out there for staff in department heads that if you see trash, and it may not be on Main Street, but outside of Main Street, that they pull over and get it, or, because that's one thing I do see a lot of, and unfortunately, you know, Saturday morning after Friday night, we do, it's unfortunate, some of the things you see around town, like beer boxes and things of that nature, but I, I would encourage you just, that you mention to staff that it may not be on Main Street, but outside of Main Street, like on First or Depot or on Cambria, that, you know, if they see something, stop and pick it up. It's a good way to make the, and, and citizens should adhere to that, too. You see something, pick it up, there's usually a trash can close to you. I got lucky on Miller Alleghany, there was a couple recyclable, so I was able to use some containers on that street, but I do notice there seems to be some trash that's been there for a while. And usually when I get downtown, I'm too, too exhausted, I'm trying to get home, so at that point, so just mention that to them.
I've, I've had that, that a couple of times with citizens, and I've always, through